I'd like to call this meeting to work session to order at 7:05. Okay, first, fire chief. What do you have for us?
First thing, just past Wednesday, we conducted the fire prevention program at the high-rise. We had about sixty people show up. It was a very positive turnout. They had a lot of questions about the sprinkler system and everything. And actually, it's a pleasure to go over there and do that program for those people. Second thing, currently, this week, as far as doing the fire prevention programs in the schools, we did some of the schools today, and then the rest of the schools will be done tomorrow and Wednesday. We're working with the code enforcement people on the Knott's Box Program. They notified about forty businesses so far on the requirements, and we have about three in place and about another three or four already ordered. So that program's moving along. We finally got the denial on the carbon monoxide grant, but the grant period for this year now is currently open, so we're working on the next grant. And one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to trim back the scope of the grant. And look, we had asked for $111,000, and nobody in our situation got anywhere near that amount of money. So we're going to trim the program back to focus on children, the elderly, and handicapped people to get CO detectors in those residences. We had twenty members go to the National Farm Firefighters Memorial Ceremony yesterday. This year is the 25th anniversary of Julian Bligh's line of duty death, and that was a very moving... There was 122 firefighters in 2008 that were killed in the line of duty, and so that ceremony was... Those names are added to a memorial down in Emmitsburg.
How many years was it, chief?
It's 25 years now. Pretty fast. The last thing I have is that on September 20th, we had the woman who drove her car into the river, who was rescued by the fire department. What I would like... I have a complete write-up on that, but I would like to propose if council would consider, one, is that the individual who actually swam out and got the lady, there is a series of medals that are available. And so what I would recommend is the top medal is Medal of Valor. The next medal down is Medal of Gallantry. And so for this particular rescue, I'd recommend that the borough consider awarding him a Medal of Gallantry. The other thing is that the other firefighters involved in the rescue, there's what they call unicitations, which is like a pin and a date of what it was. The total cost is about $225 for all the awards. We process that as quick as possible. We may not have it available for this month's meeting, and if not, then we present it the next month. That was it.
Does anybody have anything for Herbie?
Just considering the fact, I didn't realize, and I didn't live in Bristol when Mr. Bligh was killed, but I'm thinking that perhaps as a council and the mayor, we should do something, you know, to honor, to, I guess, to acknowledge to his family that we appreciate the sacrifice that they made on behalf of the borough. So perhaps we can talk about doing something in a more formal way for our firefighters and council to honor Mr. Bligh and his family.
We could take a look at that. One of the things that, in the bus trip that we went on yesterday, his grandson was interested in seeing the memorial, and so he went along with us and participated in everything. So that was a very important thing for his grandson.
Sure. And the other question, you were talking about the Medal of Valor, the Medal of... Who awards that to this particular...
That would be the borough would have to purchase the medals.
Oh, the purchase part, we get, but you make the recommendation? Like, we don't give him the medal. You do, right? The chief or the mayor?
Right, the mayor or the president. The borough would make the award presentation.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we really haven't done a lot of those kind of things, but like, medals generally, from a firefighter standpoint, is something that... It's a very special thing for you to be awarded one of those. And I think, like, the citations and certificates are nice, but this is really a step up in the recognition process.
Which is what he did, was a step up from...
Jumped in the river three o'clock in the morning and rescued that lady, yes.
We'll work on something.
Robin, why don't you and Betty lead this with Herbie?
Okay.
Since it's Mr. Bligh's, you know, from your ward and...
Sure.
From Bristol, yes.
Right, and they swam out in a river. Let's try to come up with something and go through Robin and Betty and find something.
And the mayor.
And the mayor. Anything else? Chief?
Under training, Sergeant Morris has completed another installation in a series of fingerprint classification schools, and he'll be returning in November for another class. Also last month, Officer Dean Johnson completed a one-week training in crisis intervention. And he, along with officers from Bristol Township, Ben Salem, Northampton Township, Bristol Township, Ben Salem, and Northampton, they learned how to deal with subjects who are in mental health crisis and what alternatives there were to the criminal justice system when dealing with those individuals. As we speak right now, our officers are in firearms training, low light and nighttime firearms training, and they'll continue the training throughout this month of October to get the entire department trained, as we do every year. And citations for the month, we had a total of 121 citations. We hit Route 13 pretty hard because of regressive driving issues and some funding that we had available for that task. And of the 121 citations, 92 were issued on Route 13. The rest were issued throughout the town, Beaver Street, Otter Street, and some other streets along the way. That's all I have.
Anybody have anything for the chief?
Yeah. Arnie, I'm getting complaints... I got a stop sign put on Market and Pond, because there was one on the right side, and then we put the other one on the left side, because the street gets a little wider, and people were complaining that people weren't seeing it. Now I have a complaint that on Market and Wood, people are not slowing down, they're just flying through there, both ways.
On Market, as they cross Wood?
On Market, Woods this way, the firehouse is there. They're saying that the cars are just flying through if people are coming through. If kids are trying to get across there, people are just flying through there. They're actually not doing a speed limit, they're going faster than what they're supposed to be. I recommend that maybe we can put some cops out there and, I don't know, just patrol the area or just do a survey to see if maybe another stop sign is warranted. I don't know. Seems kind of close to the other one, but, you know, they seem to be concerned about the traffic in that area.
I'll address that.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, the speed limit's on Route 13. Does state set them?
Yes.
Is... Are they consistent all the way down?
Forty in the borough, and I believe they turned to fifty in Bristol Township.
Okay, so it's like forty from, say, Burger King to Green Lane?
Yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah, I think the fifty starts from Green Lane northbound.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
I'm listening.
Okay, just, Merle, you want to speak on these radios or...
Yeah.
Merle, you want to go to the mic, please?
Basically, we're looking at a communications issue here, and Bill has been our primary communications man since 1971. Anything involving communications, Bill's the man. He knows the electronics, and he gets us the best prices, he does the repairs, whether it's the police, the fire, or whatever. We're having an issue now, or it's going to be approaching shortly, with the county with what's called a narrow band, and there's going to have to be some changes made. So Bill has researched and gotten all the information that's needed, and he's going to do a presentation here to you to let you know what it is, how we should approach it, and what your thoughts are.
Thank you, Merle.
Basically, Bristol Borough's been operating their own private mobile radio system since... Well, for 50 years, a little over 50 years. Way back when, it used to be the only radio system we had in town for the police, the fire department, the paid fire department, and also the municipal services. So our license goes back quite a ways. Our license is good until 2015. However, as of January 1st, 2013, the federal government is mandating what they call narrowbanding, where you take a radio channel and make two radio channels out of it, basically. None of our present equipment is capable of doing that. In fact, the most recent piece of equipment that we've purchased for the municipal side of the house was in the mid-1970s, the repeater over at Grundy Towers across the street. And that's pretty much our focal point across the street on a rooftop is where all our equipment resides. By having our own radio system and maintaining our own radio system, basically, it's a one-time expenditure, once you buy the system, unless something happens to it, basically, every month, it's a free ride. At the present time, we're renting radio communication space from a commercial carrier for approximately $500 a month or $6,000 a year. We can basically upgrade our present system for $6,000. Like I said, we haven't spent any money on our system since the mid-1970s.
Now, just to interrupt you for me, is this for police radios?
No, this is for the local government, the borough, the road department, emergency management. The police department's another issue, and...
We don't even have radios in the truck anymore.
That's correct. We don't have radios in the trucks anymore, because when the new fleet of trucks were purchased and the building was being renovated, the radios were taken out of the old equipment, disappeared. However, we still maintain a repeater across the street, we still maintain a radio license.
Can I... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Basically, if you let that radio license lapse and attempt to apply for another radio license, you'll never get the parameters that we have today, which, basically, when that system was being used, we could talk from anywhere in the lower end of the county up into Doylestown.
Can I recommend, Mr. Ferguson, that you come in, set up an appointment with Mr. Dillon, and we'll see what's involved and, you know, how we're going to approach this?
Mr. Dillon, I have been speaking about this, and Mr. Dillon recommended I come to council and make you people aware.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think everybody understands what's going on, and that we have to make a decision, do we want to lose our rights with this tower after 2015, or do we want to put radios back into the trucks, even to keep it going?
I wasn't actually proposing radios in the trucks, I was proposing portables for each individual, rather than so much, because they're out of the trucks...
We won't have to use our two ways. We can use your radios.
You'll use your own radios.
Our own radios.
Where you won't be paying $500 a month to do that.
Right, okay.
And basically, we've been pricing equipment through GSA, through Co-Stars. We get a very good discount, and like I said, for approximately $6,000, we can replace everything that we used to have, including the repeater across the street, and the $6,000 would be, pretty much, is what you're going to spend a year by renting commercial equipment. It's not so much the monthly rent, but when you have a major storm or anything go through the area, you have the power go out or whatever, most of the commercial systems fail, because the two sites in town that you're using do not have backup power, and they are all tied together by telephone lines, and telephone lines also come down. We have backup power across the street, since we have the fire and emergency management equipment over there. It would be in the borough's best interest to keep what they have and improve upon it. And if anybody has any questions, I'll attempt to answer.
Does anybody have anything for Mr. Ferguson? What I would like to do is, Mr. Mucie, maybe you and Mr. Polanski could meet, set up a meeting with the manager and see if we can get this resolved, or what direction the borough wants to go in. Okay? Jim? Contact Anthony and Leo and...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open up some public participation. Anybody on this side of the room needs to discuss anything? Anybody on this side of the room would like to discuss anything?
I just had a question. I kind of don't under... Excuse me, don't understand it. There was an incident today where Joanne Martella was cited for requesting information report regarding the delivery of political literature. I believe you made the complaint, Mr. D Giuseppe. I just, I don't understand, like, what she did wrong or...
She was cited?
Well, I mean, the police were called and...
What are you talking about? Do you have any questions?
I'm only going by the incident report.
Let me ask you a question. Do you have anything pertaining borough business?
No, but what I have is I'm asking you a question.
Do you have anything pertaining borough business?
I'm simply asking you a question.
I don't need to answer your question.
Why not?
First of all, it has nothing to do with you. Mrs. Martell has a problem.
Right, but what I'm saying is...
He wants to put my name on a piece of literature.
I'm just asking you...
Well, you want to explain it, I'll explain it. Go ahead.
Yes.
What's the question you want to know?
I'm only asking you to explain... I don't understand what she did wrong. That's all.
Okay, I'm going to explain to you. She didn't do anything wrong. What I said to Mrs. Martell yesterday, not today, so you got your days mixed up.
Okay, well, I'm just going...
You never come up here with the right facts.
Ralph, I'm just going by this. I'm asking you a simple question.
Let me explain, let me explain something to you. Yesterday, she was passing out a piece of literature for Mr. Marucci's campaign.
Okay.
In that literature, my name's in it.
Okay.
I'm not running against Mr. Marucci.
Right, I understand.
But everything in that campaign literature has my name in it, and they're all lies. Okay? And I can guarantee you they're lies. Now, if you wanted to sit here and dispute that, I'll dispute that.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just trying to...
But I said to Mrs. Martell, because of all the people that like to write their anonymous letters and want to bash my name and my family's name all over town...
I understand.
...that are gutless people...
Right, I understand.
...that don't want to come up here and put their name on something.
Right.
Where they want to hide behind their blogs and all this stuff.
Right.
I said to Mrs. Martell, all I want to do is have an incident report written that you were the person distributing this literature with my name in it. Because it's if, when I find out who these people are...
Right.
...eventually, there's going to be a defamation, a character lawsuit.
Okay.
You like to hide behind blogs.
Who?
You personally.
Hide behind blogs?
There's no... I know what you write.
Tell me. I don't hide behind anything.
It doesn't matter, I'm not going to get involved.
If I write something, I'll say it.
This is pertaining to borough business.
I don't hide behind any blogs. I will tell you to your face, I'm a man. I don't have to hide behind blogs.
Let me finish. I gave you the floor.
Sure, go ahead.
Mrs. Martell, who filed a lawsuit against the borough for a handicap parking place because she couldn't walk five feet to her door, was able yesterday to deliver literature throughout all of Hareman, up and down steps, on porches, in yards. She was healthy yesterday. God bless her.
She had a good day.
Well, my theory is, she wasn't cited, it was just put on record, so down the road, if there's... I finally have somebody now that I could identify that's using my name in a piece of literature.
Okay.
It's a lie, Mr. Marucci's literature is a lie, and if he wants to come up here and defend it, I'll sit here and defend it with him.
Right, no, I was just curious, I was trying to understand.
This literature that he passed out is a lie about all the overspending and all... None of it's true.
Right.
So get your facts straight when you come up here.
Wait, wait, wait. Get my facts straight. What facts? I'm just asking you to explain to me...
You said she was cited today.
Okay, I was wrong.
Why she cited?
I stand corrected, okay? I'm just reading, I'm just reading the incident report, and I'm just asking you to explain to me, because I did not understand it.
I just explained it to you.
Right, thank you.
Where did you get the incident report? I'm just curious, where did you get the incident report?
You got a copy of it.
I got a copy of it.
How'd you get a copy of it?
How did you get a copy of an incident report?
Somebody gave it to me.
Oh, did somebody go to the police station today to get it?
I don't know. It appeared in my mailbox.
I got a copy of that. Do you know?
It appeared in my mailbox.
They can purchase information.
They purchased it, okay. And then is there a log in, in the police department stating who came and purchased? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it appeared in my mailbox, and I just, I'm just saying...
I told you, you're the pillar of the community.
I'm just saying, exactly, exactly.
You're the savior.
Exactly, you know what I mean? But I'm glad you pointed that out, you know what I mean?
You're everybody's hero. What else do you have?
Like I said, I'm glad you pointed that out. No, but like I'm saying, I just, I didn't understand it, you know what I mean?
How you do?
Sort of, yes.
If I find out who's writing these letters, it's going to eventually, it's close.
Absolutely, and if I wrote a letter, I'd be the first one to sign it and say...
Well, I stalled your idea today, right, about your poor...
What was it?
All right, Chris, what else? I don't have time for this stuff.
But you never have time for this, but you have to have time, because I'm allowed time.
We're trying to run a borough, okay? So if you have anything political you want to discuss, I mean, it's getting to a point where you're wasting our time.
No, you're wasting your own time, because, you know, I'm a resident too, and I'm allowed.
Well, you're talking about stuff that doesn't...
No, I'm asking you to please explain this, so I understand it.
I did, I explained.
Am I not allowed to understand it?
Really, it doesn't pertain this meeting, Mr. Saxon.
Just a point of interest for you. You know, you're saying that he has to answer that question. You asked him a question pertaining to a political...
No, I didn't say he had to answer.
Yes, you just said, you've got to answer my question.
Okay, I'm saying, I'm trying to understand it.
Well, what I'm trying to say to you is, that's not a piece of borough council business. You're looking at a private citizen's...
Okay, I'm sorry, then should I ask, should I ask the chief?
Just finish.
Because you're almost done. When Bobby Lebo gets here, things will be better.
A private citizen's report.
I didn't hear what he said.
Ralph filled out an incident report as a private citizen, nothing to do with this council or the borough. You come here and want this private citizen to respond to you about that incident report?
Well, he made the report, I thought maybe...
It's not borough government business.
I thought maybe he could explain it to me.
He doesn't need to.
None of your business.
You don't have to, it's none of your business. It's private.
The borough of the community, you're setting yourself.
No business.
You're setting yourself.
Look, Chris, I know you're of least average intelligence, you've got to understand this, right? It's not borough business.
I understand, but when I try to ask, you know, when I try to ask other people, nobody wants to...
Well, you know what? Do a little research. There's called books, it's called Borough Code, you can pick it up, you can read it.
But why? Why can't you come right here?
You don't need to come here, you go downstairs. It's a police matter.
Waste our time here.
You want to come here and get your two, three minutes of fame every week.
I don't, look, I don't need fame. You're the one that needs the fame.
I don't need any...
Oh, yes, you do.
Everybody does.
Yes, you do. Okay, okay, a piece of borough business, okay?
All right.
I believe it was last month, Ms. Rodriguez asked about a stop sign at a certain location, maybe one be put up, and I was curious if it got put up?
Yeah, you didn't ride by? I thought since you were the pillar of the community, you would have rode by and checked it out.
No, well, that's not really my area, so...
Oh, but you're inquiring about it.
Well, the Hareman's not in your area.
No, 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 not only because...
Hareman's your area?
No.
Well, you're here about Hareman's.
Well, just to let you know, yes, because it was not anything that needed to be investigated. There's one on this side, now there's one on this side.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, it was good that it got put up, because in July, another resident came up and asked about a sign down by the tot lot where the people continually speed up and down the road.
There's a stop sign already there.
Right, a stop sign, but they asked...
We're not putting a new stop sign.
No, no, it's not a new stop sign, it's something, because the distance between the stop signs, it's almost like a drag strip. So they were asking, is it possible, maybe that you could put up a sign that kids play there, there is a park there, you know, to, you know, slow down or something like that? And, you know, it just never got put up, and I was just, you know, wondering if it's a possibility that it would or could get put up.
Probably would, it could.
Very possible.
It could.
You know what I mean, right by the tot lot.
What else do you have?
No, that's it.
For your time.
Thank you.
Who else?
Mr. Cantiallo.
Right.
Anthony Cantiallo, 339 Hay Street. This is for Joe Nelson.
Thank you.
And this is for Chief Water. Just a couple more complaints about the police department, that's all. I'd like you to read that over and...
Johnny, why don't you talk to me? You don't talk to other people.
I sent you a letter. That's why he came up here, because he used the police to intimidate people. That's all he was saying. We don't want to be intimidated by the police, that's all. I'm done, thanks.
What's this?
It's horrible, huh?
I don't even hear a word, he's mumbling.
He doesn't want you to intimidate the police.
He don't want to be intimidated by the police.
Who's intimidating you?
You, somebody was handing out pamphlets, and you approached her with the police. You couldn't talk to her by yourself.
Oh, you're back on the Martell thing? Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
These two guys need to get a life, really.
You need to get a life.
You really do.
And when they leave, don't you care about what else we're doing here?
Don't you care about borough business? You're leaving?
Folks of the community, you're leaving.
I do care about borough business. Did Joe Morris apologize to somebody, Chief Water? Did he have to apologize to Ronnie Smith after Ronnie Smith got up here and Joe Morris harassed him? Is that true?
It is.
So why not?
It's a personal question.
It's a personal question.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah, you were, you were a nurse at one time, right? You understand HIPAA laws and those kind of things and privacy laws? You can't discuss personnel.
Well, that's I bet you, he was supposed to check in that it's about Mrs. Quarles. Does anybody care that her husband got stun-gunned? No apology was made? Nobody cares about that? I'm just curious. Nobody on the council cares?
I do care, but they're not here, so I don't know what the situation was.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, I think we all care.
I just wanted to put...
I think we all care, Tony. You're coming in here and you're saying, doesn't anybody care? We do care.
Okay.
We heard everybody that day, we figured it out, we know what's going on, they're not back, they're not back. So hopefully, everything was resolved.
I hope it's not because they're afraid to speak.
No, I don't think they're afraid. I don't think they have to be afraid.
I know you and Chris aren't afraid to speak.
Absolutely not.
Not you two guys.
No.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, all right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
See you later.
I'll be back.
See you Monday.
All right, good luck.
Good. About perception, perception about bringing a town down, there it is.
And they leave though, I mean-
That's a perfect example.
People don't care so much. They have it the police say, harass for often they leave. They used to stay though, right? They used to stay.
Well, Jimmy-
They didn't stay anymore.
Jimmy's not here tonight. They got their full coaching in tonight.
Borough business, let's go.
All right, Michael, what do you have? I'm sorry, anybody else have anything to say?
Let's follow that act.
What do you have?
Um, where are we on paper with Matt? Are we done or are we halfway done or?
I'd say, uh, in terms of sealing the path, it's about three-quarters finished, there's certain areas that still have to be excavated and, uh, uh, you know, put back and then that section will be sealed, but, uh, hopefully it'll be finished.
I noticed a lot of it roped off and stuff and the guys seem to be moving along pretty good, I guess it just depends on what kind of spots they hit and, you know, what kind of problems they run.
Uh, Waldron walked the path, uh, with the contractor and he marked off those areas that have to be excavated and replaced.
That's it.
Anthony.
Anthony, uh, I got good news and good news, because we need good news in this town all the time. On September 19th, on a Saturday night, Little Bristol Borough entertained about 10,000 people throughout the, uh, borough and the county. Uh, we had some of the best swap groups in the country here. All three of them told us that they would come back here, it was one of the most beautiful outdoor settings they ever played in. I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in it, because everyone did a wonderful job. That's the first good news. The second good news is we budgeted $25,000 for this. While we had expenses of $23,247.63, this is written down here, I might as well use it all. And we had revenue of $62,505. And the estimated grand total, the whole show was $17,000, which is $8,000 on the budget and we did a hell of a job entertaining a lot of people. A lot of people had a lot of fun. I want to thank everybody who had something to do with, with it, I want to thank everybody who came and enjoyed Bristol Borough for the night and hope everyone comes back.
Thank you, Anthony.
Question for the manager. What date are we going to stop the street sweepers? Because last year we got a little confused, we wanted a little longer, nobody knew, or people did know and kind of forgot, so can we get a concrete date and get it posted throughout the town?
Yes, I believe the date, and I'll confirm it with Mr. Waldron, so we can recommend the council, it will probably be Friday, December the 11th, uh, you know, weather permitting, meaning we get a big snowstorm the first week of December, second week of December we won't be sweeping, but, uh, you know, the last few years we've been able to sweep right up through the second week of December without any trouble.
And my third thing is, see if the manager can get the Phillies flag up outside since they're in the playoffs again. I'm done.
I want to thank Mr. Waldron and his crew from the Washington Street, had a problem with the alley and just one phone call, Mr. Waldron was taking care of Mr. Dillon. And also thank Mr. Mutz, because my aunts and everybody I talked to about D WAP, didn't hear one bad thing about it. Mr. Mutz did all the job.
Yeah, he did, Anthony.
Nobody knows it, so.
Well, they do.
Yeah.
Betty, Betty.
I do care about these people. Do, we all do.
Uh, it's sad.
Um, next, next week we'd like to bring up the 10 and under softball, 21 district champs, um, and Anthony's going to bring in the boys, they're not 10 and under, they're 15.
15, 16.
16, um, I spoke to them, she's going to bring Maria the names tomorrow, so she can type up those beautiful certificates as she does. Um, also, a few complaints about the parking lot, Mill Street parking lot at nighttime. Maybe we can look into putting signs like "Park closed after dusk" or "Dark" or something, or "After 11" or, just so these people that are just parking down there and doing whatever it is they're doing, we have, you know, more ability to say, "Get out," you know, or "Find them" or something. Just a lot of nonsense going on at nighttime, I think that'll help more police. And I also wanted to thank Anthony, Robin, Ralph, Anna, Polly Offcos, everybody involved, you know, Mike and Jamie were helping, everybody. I know there's a crew of people, I saw their name on the website, um, they did a great job and they always do, and it takes a lot of time, and you went under budget, which is great, Jimmy will love to see this when he comes back.
That's why I did it.
And, uh, thank you, thank you for your hard work and your presentation for this town, I think it's a great thing what we do. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin.
Um, I noticed that there wasn't on the agenda proclamation for Historic Bristol Day on October 17th, you want to add that? Don't we usually do a proclamation? Um, and also as a side note, the recreational grant that we received that we're going to redo the tot lots with, I wondered if perhaps we could just get a quote on what lights would cost at the Otter Street Field. I don't know if we can afford to put something there, but just get a quote for what, what it will cost a couple poles and a couple of lights. Don't make it sound easy, a couple poles, a couple lights, it's not-
No, that's a good idea.
Well, the lights are so good now, that's all you need.
Right.
Two would do the whole field.
Right, and, uh, that's all.
Okay, I got a lot of things.
Oh, shopper.
I want to talk about the Bristol Steel Treatment Plant in Harriman. We have started the environmental cleanup on that site, taken a little while to get that done, there's a lot involved. We have taken some pictures of, many of the council wants to look at it. But, uh, when myself and Mr. Dillon was out there along with the demolition company and going through some of the things that need to be done, if you look at it, it's really a weird shaped piece of ground and it goes wider and it angles down, but on the left-hand side, it's preferred real estate end of borough. We were thinking, since we're cleaning this site up, it would be nice to take down all that brush, trees that are dead and things that are falling over and really clear the property out, so maybe people can get a view of the river. For now, uh, it's an extra $9,550. I spoke to Mr. Harris, who's a representative of Harriman, who feels strongly about cleaning up, you know, that site and has been pushing that, uh, I know Mr. Lutz is always against spending money, but I think it'd be a good idea if we make this an agenda item and authorize the manager to authorize this additional work of $9,550 to clean the site up pretty nice. So that's one thing on the agenda. The next thing is next month I would like to bring in Pliggett, that's the company that is investing our $24 million to get an update on where we are because of all the investments, and we do that two or three times a year. So if we can get them, Mr. Dillon, to come in in November, give us an idea of what's going on. Also, I'd like to start scheduling budget meetings. Last year, myself, Mr. Dillon, Mr. Salerno, along with other council members would stop in periodically and we would try to get a budget, a rough draft of a budget, so when we presented the council at that meeting, we can start either adding or deleting or whatever you want to add to it or cut from it. But right now it looks like, and I could almost guarantee that there will not be a tax increase for 2010. Looking at the budget, our financial picture is really doing good.
So we're not going bankrupt?
No.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm sure.
What are you showing me?
No. They may have to change their literature. They all may have to change their literature tomorrow, but, uh, and not because it's an election year, we haven't raised taxes and it'll be six straight years now without a tax increase, thanks to our manager and we was keeping an eye on it, Angie, I think that we're in good shape and we should get through another year without a tax increase.
Yeah, remember those, um, there were like flowers we were sending out quarterly, letting people know?
Newsletters, there's one coming out the end of October.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, we do that and let people know what's going on.
Well, there's so much, there's so much stuff out there that it's just, it's lies, but I don't know.
I know.
Nobody wants to come here and defend it, so, but just to let the residents know that we're in good shape.
But I think though, Betty, you know what, I think that if there was a period of time when it was more necessary, but now that we're on-
Yeah, I don't think we have to do it quarterly.
We're as transparent a government as you can say. The audience sits here, everybody in this building and this town knows what's going on around 8:52, and this is what happens in your borough government.
All right, the other thing is, we receive no bids or no offers on the pump house that sits at the end of old, uh, Route 13. I'm recommending to council that, it's an ice sewer coming in town, we argue with people to clean up their property and we have a building without a roof.
Absolutely.
We need to take, uh, initiative and tear this building down. We tried to save it, it's just an old building, it would be a nice little information center or somebody would have came up with a little coffee shop or something there, but nobody has an interest, so I like to put on the agenda to authorize, uh, the borough workers and if they don't think they can do it, to go out to bid to tear that building down. The other thing is, we were awarded a $50,000 grant for the change lights, the decorative lighting that's down at Lyons Parker and along Jefferson Avenue, Rackliff Street, Mill Street. And the grant that they offered was you have to use LED lights. Well, the price of an LED fixture is around $3,000 or more. A regular high-pressure sodium light, which will give you a better light, lasts just as long, if not longer, they're about $900 apiece. So we have 160, approximately 160 lights throughout town that we would like to change as they start going bad. If you go down at the Wharf right now, most, all the lights are out. So you're really in a catch-22, if you take the $50,000, it's only going to replace, what, uh, 10, 16?
About 18 lights.
About 18 lights, when you have 160 lights to replace. So although it's great to get $50,000, but we could buy them three times less the amount of money, it makes sense for us not to take the $50,000 if our intentions is to replace these fixtures. It's cheaper to replace the fixture because the balus is bad, the bulbs are bad, and by the time you start buying all the parts, you put a new fixture up that'll probably last you another 20, 30 years. So it's just a recommendation, I mean, you can let the manager know this week how everybody feels about it, but I, I would recommend that we not accept the $50,000. Change the lights through our street lighting account, which we have some additional funding in it that we could start doing this project. Again, it's no cost to taxpayers, it's, it's a fund that, you know, you collect through your street lighting.
The energy control and the lights are out, is there any difference?
The high-pressure sodium, I think the guy said it's 11 years. It's an insignificant difference on the amount of the draw.
Break on the, the street lighting, Bill, if we use LEDs.
Uh, it's an insignificant decrease if we use the LEDs. Uh, I got a report from suburban lighting consultants who've been the borough's consultants on this subject for the last four or five years, and, uh, he lists four reasons, uh, why he recommends, uh, that we go with the high-pressure sodium. And if you look at the LED lights, they're also offensive to the eyes. If you want to see one LED, we have one on Mill Street we got as a loner about in the middle of the street, and it's really offensive and, uh, I would, uh-
But doesn't it make sense in the long term?
No, not, not long term, short term, it's, uh, uh, I, I think LEDs are good for the traffic signals as an example, uh, but anything beyond that, uh-
There's one, not to interrupt you, Mr. Dillon, but I think the high-pressure sodium may last 11 years, and the other light may last 15 years or something like that, so-
It doesn't pay back the money?
Doesn't pay back the money to spend the extra $2,100 per fixture or more just to go LED. And I know we hate to turn down any grants, we were successful in receiving the grant, but in the long run it's going to cost the borough more money to keep, and you don't want to have LED here and high-pressure sodium, and that's what happened on our street lights, now they're all uniform. So it's a recommendation. The other thing is, I just want to talk about our road program that's coming to an end. I'm going to ask Mr. Dillon if he can get Gilmore in Monday night's meeting.
Tuesday.
Tuesday night, that's right, we have no meeting Monday because it's, uh, Columbus Day, so we're meeting Tuesday instead, but to come in and do a-
I'm sorry, you mentioned road program. Can, can George go see Mr. Bonner? Because he was complaining that his curb was ruined when they did the street, and I saw him this weekend, nobody's been out there, so before they leave-
That's fine.
They can just go see him and make sure everything's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Please.
Note that. Just to give everybody an idea on the road program, the final figures aren't in, but I think council's going to be very happy, I like to present everything Monday night and I like to have Gilmore Tuesday night, have Gilmore come in and do a presentation, just so everybody knows, in Harriman, the project that Mr. Lutz voted against doing roads, every road in Harriman was done except four streets. The 100 block of Tash Street, the 200 block of Hayes, the 200 block of McKinley and De Giuseppe Drive were the only four streets in Harriman not paved. So if we would have taken that, uh, theory that Mr. Lutz had, it would have taken 40-some years for Harriman to get their streets paved, including all the alleys in Harriman were done. And that's not only just Harriman, every single ward, whether it's our ward, your ward, or Robin and Betty's ward, was completely done, there is not one street left in this town that has a pothole or an alley that needs to be replaced. So I think we accomplished a lot and the numbers are, you're going to be happy with, we don't have the final numbers, but I like to do a presentation Tuesday, not Monday.
Also did pocket parking too.
We did parka, parka-
Six times off fast, Ralph.
Pocket parking. Uh, but again, almost everything is done. And the other last thing I'd like to do is, since we're honoring people, to bring John Doyle in, who was the Little League president for the last few years, who did an outstanding job, turned the league around, left the league financially in good shape, bring him in, uh, if we can't do it next week at Monday night, Mr. Dillon, maybe do it at November's meeting, but just to show him, uh, we appreciate all his hard work and effort that he put forth to keep Little League going. And I think that's all I have, I think it was enough, right? The trash cans, our trash contract's coming up, and I talked about trash cans, one thing I like to get quotes on, and we talked about the trash meeting, is a new recycle bin going to a rubber, something like a Rubbermaid, where in the winter they're not, they won't crack from the cold when they, they throw them or they hit the ground, and have two sizes, uh, size that we have now and one maybe a little bit bigger or double that size for people that use more recycling, and I like to try to see if we could put that in the trash contract, so we can give one to everybody in town, at least one new one.
They won't have to buy it?
They won't have to buy it.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Dillon.
I'd like, uh, council to, uh, consider at their, uh, meeting on Tuesday evening, two amended, uh, minimum municipal obligations for the two pension funds, uh, Mr. Salerno, Angie and myself met with the, the actuary, uh, about 10 days ago, reviewed the figures and we have, uh, new, uh, figures, uh, establishing the minimum municipal obligation, uh, for the two pension, uh, uh, funds. So, uh, I'll have those in your packet, uh, Friday and request that you adopt those amended MMOs, uh, Tuesday evening. I have a memo from Maria and I'll place that in your packet, uh, Friday also. It confirms her meeting with, uh, the Thomas, uh, H.J. Thompson Company, uh, they are the, uh, company that has the borough's liability insurance. Uh, the borough was informed that the new loss ratio for the borough is now 34% of premium paid. The gentleman advised that this was an excellent loss ratio and continues the borough's positive trend from a five-year high loss ratio of 330%, uh, meaning our losses were 330% above the premium paid. So, uh, we've really turned it around, uh, in the last four or five years, uh, I mean, uh, all the employees are conscious about safety issues out there, so, uh, and we've been sending people to seminars. I think this also has to do, uh, with, uh, new and improved equipment, not additional equipment, but just replacing old equipment. And reflected in the actual dollar savings to the taxpayers, the insurance premium for liability was, uh, round the figures off, $233,000 in, in 2008. Uh, last year because of the, uh, again, the downward loss of premium, uh, or losses, the, uh, premium cost to the borough was $180,000. And it's projected that in, uh, next year's budget, we will be looking at a figure of $162,000. So this is like a $70,000 decrease over a two-year period, which equals a mill, so that's some of the costs that I think we've been able to, you know, keep under control. And I guess the only other thing I have, uh, the members of, uh, the sewer authority had asked the, uh, the chairman, uh, Mr. Tosti, to appear before council and, uh, put certain things on the record, uh, but, uh, let me read his letter. Dear members of Borough Council, as the chairman of the Bristol Sewer Authority, I hope to speak with you this evening concerning the incorrect information listed in Mr. Marucci's campaign literature concerning our residents' sewer rates. I, I am unable to attend this evening because of a minor medical operation. In Mr. Marucci's recent campaign literature, where residents are asked to vote for Mr. Marucci, a reason given states, "Since 2004, your sewer bills have tripled." This is a lie. The truth is that in 2004, the sewer bill was $42.63 for 10,000 gallons of sewer. In 2007, the sewer authority reduced the sewer rates by 5% to $40.50 for 10,000 gallons of sewer. Since 2007, the sewer rates have remained the same, while millions of dollars of capital improvements have been completed at the sewer plant. I would like to, to advise further that the sewer authority will not be increasing the sewer rates in 2010. Thank you for allowing the authority to tell the residents the truth, it's signed by Gary Atosti, chairman of the Bristol Borough- It's signed by Gary A. Tosti, chairman of the Bristol Borough Sewer Authority. Thank you.
That's very nice.
Stepping up, huh?
I think everybody's getting tired of the lies in this town, but nobody wants to come forward and, you know, we have documentation. They just want to, you know, make statements.
Most people know the truth, Ralph.
I know.
Anything else, Mr. Dome?
No.
Mr. Salerno?
Several months ago, the council president appointed a committee of private citizens to consider the upcoming refuse collection contract with the purpose of making a recommendation to council of specifications. The committee met several times. In one meeting, we met with at least two of the prospective contractors. Council president, Borough manager attended those meetings along with myself. As a result of those meetings, we, the committee has prepared to submit the recommendations to council, and we'll hand those out. Hopefully, we, council can decide on the bid specs Tuesday evening, and we can authorize the advertisement for the bids. This needs to be done by the end of the year. I'll go over the major recommendations that the committee has made. Just let me say something, that in considering these recommendations, the committee was very aware of the cost consequences. They understood that the council can ask for whatever they want, but anytime you ask for something specific, there's going to be a cost involved. So they tried to keep away from that. This is very basic. It's very similar to the last proposal five years ago, except for one, one major change, which we'll discuss. But anyway, let's go through this, and then council can consider this for Tuesday night's meeting. The first item is the pickup days, and this is the major change. Under the current contract, the Borough is divided into three sectors, and each sector has two pickup days, so the contractor is in Bristol six days a week. And I think that the committee felt that that did not work because they're always here. So their recommendation, option one, is that the proposal be for two days per week, Tuesday and Friday. So the entire town would be picked up on Tuesday and Friday, and they'd only be here two days a week. As an option, there was some discussion as to whether it should be Tuesday, Friday, Monday, Thursday, and there were pros and cons. As an option, we can ask the contractor to pick up two days per week, but the Borough would have the option of changing those days upon 30 or 60 days' notice. If we didn't feel Tuesday, Friday was working, we could change it. Again, that second option is probably going to have a price tag attached to it. If council wishes, we can have it bid as an alternative. We can look at both of them and then compare them. The second item is the bulk pickup. Currently, two, two bulk pieces are picked up on the second day. The recommendation, option one, was that one piece be picked up twice a day. So on each day of pickup, you put out a bulk piece. As an option, we can ask for two bulk pieces twice a week. Again, obviously, that would cost more. Recyclables. Option one is one time per week on the first day of the pickup, which would be Tuesday. The other option is where we can choose whether it be the first or second day. That would be the other option. Leaf pickup, that really hasn't changed. That would be once a week for six weeks in the fall. The only thing that we, that the committee recommended is that the beginning period of that, that we be given a window, depending on the weather and how the leaves are falling, the Borough would decide when it begins. So starting at the second week of October didn't make any sense because the leaves are not falling. We might push it to the third week, fourth week, or first week of November. But it still would just be six weeks. It'd just be a matter of when it started. But just understand, these next items are mandatory under Act 101. We have to have a leaf pickup. And if you go to the second page, this is something new for our contract, but this is part of the new act, is we have to have a yard waste pickup. The yard waste is twigs, brush, limbs, not grass, okay? So the recommendation would be once a month from January through October. So basically, the, the months you're not having the leaves picked up would be once a month pickup for leaves and limbs and brush, et cetera. The con?
Grass you can still put in a can any time.
Yes, yes. Grass is not part of that, and we, we ask that question. That's important because I have a big item. Contract term...
The yard waste, that has to go in the brown?
The leaf?
Goes in the brown.
Right.
And the other stuff has to be tied up, I guess, in the...
Tied up, right. Just tied up. The contract term, last time, we gave the contractors an option of bidding anywhere from one to five years, and obviously, that worked out. Again, the recommendation is that the contractors can bid one, two, three, four, or five, or all of them. And we're also recommending that we ask them to bid a two-year option, which is legal. So they would actually give us a price for another two years on top of the five years. Something new we're putting in the, that we're recommending is that the equipment must be newer equipment, and that it has to be cleaned on a regular basis. And then the last item is that the contractor will be responsible for mailing brochures to all households at the end of this year, and then at the end of the fourth year, and that the Borough would approve the contents of the brochure.
Assuming the five-year contract. The fourth, that would assume a five-year contract.
Anybody have any questions on this trash? I think we hit on everything we...
I think today's is better than...
Than early November because for some reason, if we're unhappy with them, we can reject them and go after, we could change some of this and go back out the bid again. So what else you have, Mr. Salerno?
Something else came in discussing this with some of the contractors and just reviewing some of the law. Since the last contract, this council's adopted the Responsible Contractors Ordinance, which requires any contractor over $75,000 to comply with. I've taken a look at the ordinance, and I've taken a look at these contracts. It doesn't appear that this type of service contract really fits into that ordinance. And what I did is I contacted a couple of contractors and kind of discussed it with their, with their attorneys, and they basically said, listen, we, there's no contractor that's going to comply with the Responsible Contractor Ordinance because it requires a Class A apprentice program, which we find with electrical unions and labor unions. Well, these haulers, they don't have those type apprentice programs. So basically, we would not be able to give the bid documents to anyone right now that we know of. And, and looking, like I said, looking at some of the other ordinances, probably it shouldn't cover service contracts. So what I'm going to recommend for Tuesday night is this council authorize that we advertise an amendment to the ordinance removing refuse service contracts from the ordinance so we can have bidders. Right now, we may not have anybody that can qualify, which obviously is not a good thing. So I'm going to recommend that be on the agenda.
Anything else?
No.
Anybody else? Mr. Nelson?
My apologies to council, I was a little distracted during the public participation section of this meeting. One question. Do we have a Citizens Review Board for police complaints? Has there been any complaints lodged within, say, the past two or three years?
I don't think so.
Check with Ray, if anybody got an application. I don't think the...
Who's here?
Joe's here. Sorry. Chairman.
Complaints the past two or threes? Thank you very much, that's all.
Well, within the last two, there's one. Thank you.
Anybody else? Are you going to motion to adjourn?
I'm Earl Winslow, Bristol Borough Emergency Management Coordinator. What you're about to see is a short video explaining how you and your family can be prepared for an emergency. Learn how to prepare, where to get information before and during an incident, and how to prepare to evacuate or shelter in place. So please, sit back, relax, and enjoy this video, and see exactly what to do in an emergency. Thank you.
Home to more than 600,000 residents and 600 square miles, Bucks County, Pennsylvania is abound with rich history, rural areas, great communities, and busy industrial areas. Our bucolic countryside and beautiful towns like most communities are not immune to natural and man-made disasters. Hi, I'm Barb Glanzman. The Bucks County Local Emergency Planning Committee was organized to implement the requirements of Title III of the Superfund Amendments and Reauthorization Act. We are also responsible to carry out the provisions of Section 203 of the Pennsylvania Hazardous Material Emergency Planning and Response Act within the geographical boundaries of Bucks County, Pennsylvania. The Bucks County LEPC is comprised of members of the emergency services, community members, small and large industry, and elected officials. The LEPC works in concert with the Bucks County Emergency Management Agency to help citizens prepare for emergencies of all type, including chemical incidents, floods, fires, and other emergent events. In addition, the LEPC works with fire, police, and other emergency services departments to help them be prepared for potential incidents in their jurisdiction.
Do I think that our family is ready? Um, no. We are not as prepared as we might, we should be.
At this point, actually, with two small children, we're probably completely unprepared for any type of natural disaster or emergency.
Do I have a plan at home for an emergency evacuation? I would have to say no, because you don't really think of those things around this area of floods and hurricanes and things like that. Maybe just fire is the only thing people really would think about.
This short video will share information you need and steps you can take to help prepare for an emergency in your community. From making sure you have correct and timely information when an incident occurs, to preparing you to take the right steps to respond to warnings and events, some very simple steps can help protect you and your family. We will discuss how to be informed of an emergency, how to prepare for an emergency, and how to receive instructions on what to do through the following systems. The Ready Notify Network. Family evacuation plans, designed to help you and your family safely arrive to a shelter if an evacuation is necessary. And the Shelter in Place Program. An emergency supply kit is an essential part of being prepared for any situation. An emergency kit with the following recommended items is important for your comfort and survival. Water for drinking and sanitation. A three-day supply of non-perishable food, such as peanut butter and canned soup. A battery-powered or hand-cranked radio. A NOAA weather radio with tone alert and extra batteries. Flashlight and extra batteries. First aid kit. A whistle to signal for help. A dust mask. Additional plastic sheeting and tape for sheltering in place. Garbage bags and towelettes for cleaning. Basic tools. A can opener for food. And local maps in the event you need to evacuate. Additional items for your kit should include prescription medications, baby food and diapers, pet food, and extra water for your pets. You should also gather important personal documents, such as bank account numbers, homeowners and health insurance information, and emergency reference materials, such as a first aid book in case of an emergency. A change of clothing is important, as well as a bottle of bleach.
How would I find out if there's an emergency? I think the news, local weather, generally on the internet. I think you live in a small town, so you probably hear some types of sirens and things.
Mainly through, how we would find out is mainly through television. That's probably the only way that I would know.
If I was aware of something strange going on outside, I would turn my radio to KYW-1060 because I understand that's the local station that broadcasts emergencies and would give you advice on what to do.
I would expect to hear from the authorities about an emergency probably through the television with the emergency alerts, or probably through the internet, actually, would be a fast way to, I think, alert people about what's going on.
They would probably reach us either by TV, radio, internet, possibly phone.
Bucks County subscribes to a system that is called the Ready Notify Network. Examples of a disaster where Ready Notify may be activated are flooding or other weather emergency, power outages, chemical release, or other disaster that may affect lives or property. Ready Notify can also alert you to road closures and other helpful daily information. To sign up for the Ready Notify Network, go to the county website, buckscounty.org. Find the Ready Notify PA icon and click to enter the Ready Notify system. It's easy to register. Simply click on the registration icon and fill out the form. You will receive a confirmation email and text message once you have signed up. This service is free, and your personal information will be kept private. There may be conditions under which you will decide to get away, or there may be situations where you are actually ordered to leave. Assemble your family and plan what you're going to do and where you're going to go. In fact, you should choose different destinations in different directions so that you have options in the event of an emergency. It may be easier to notify an out-of-town family member who is not affected by the emergency that you will be evacuating. This person can be the point of contact in case you and members of your family are separated during evacuations. Be sure every member in your family knows the phone number and has coins or a prepaid phone card to call the emergency contact. You should also inquire about emergency plans at other places where you or your family spend time, such as at work, daycare, and school. If no plans exist, volunteer your time to create one. Thinking ahead and keeping an open line of communications and planning will help you and your family remain safe and be reunited quickly. If there is damage to your home, you may be instructed to turn off your utilities. Be sure you know where your electric, water, and gas shut-offs are located. Keep any necessary tools handy for quick use. Teach family members how to turn off utilities. Plan places where both you and your family will meet, both inside and outside of your neighborhood. If you have a car, keep a half tank of gas in it at all times in the event that you will need to evacuate. Become familiar with alternate routes and other means of transportation out of your area. If you do not have a car, plan how you will leave if you have to. Take your emergency supply kit unless you have reason to believe it has been contaminated. Be sure to lock your doors when you leave. Take your pets with you, but understand that only service animals may be allowed in public shelters. Plan how you will care for your pets in an emergency.
I have never heard of that before. Shelter in place? No, I've never heard of that.
Do you know how to shelter in place? During certain emergencies, such as a chemical release, you may be directed by the authorities to shelter in place. You can print up a guide from the internet for your emergency kit for future reference. Let's go inside and see how shelter in place works. First, make sure all of your family and pets are safely inside. Lock all doors and close all windows. Next... Next, close all air conditioning and heating vents and fireplace dampers. Turn off all fans, air conditioners, and heating systems. Take your emergency supply kit and move to an interior room with few windows if possible. Next, seal all windows, doors, and air vents with plastic sheeting and duct tape. Consider measuring and cutting the sheeting in advance to save time. Be prepared to improvise and use items you have on hand to seal gaps and keep contaminants out of the room. The local authorities may not have information immediately available. However, stay tuned to your local radio station for further information. If available in the room, stay tuned to the television or internet for further information. If you subscribe to the Ready Notify PA program, details on what to do next may appear on your cell phone or pager. The Bucks County Local Emergency Planning Committee is working hard to ensure that you have the tools you need to remain safe in an emergency. We hope that you and your family will use this video as a guide to emergency preparedness and review it often. If you have any questions, please contact the LEPC through our website, or call the Office of Bucks County Emergency Management.